I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Review and approve the agenda. I have one addition, the Chittenden watershed. So we'll discuss that underwater. And any other?
As long as we have the discussion about payment of orders, when is that still on here?
Number 10.
Yeah.
First item under number 10.
So we can have that discussion there.
Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the additional Chittenden watershed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Review the September 23 meeting minutes. Any questions, additions?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done? Open public comment. And these scenes, there's no one here under that, but, okay, and we move down to guests. Keith, things, Lisa's not here, maybe we can get you in and out, so.
Stand up.
Yes, yes, if you would, please. I'm gonna ask everybody to use that if they're gonna speak. Thank you.
Makes me feel important. So I think you have the document in front of you that I provided. I can provide a little background, but the summary is we've got a plan that gets us through the next couple of years, and the document you're referring to, this one, just in case somebody's searching. We've got a plan. We're hoping that we can be in and get a CO in December. We're still working with the fire marshal on a few things, so we're hoping towards the end of December we actually get in the building. Phase one is kind of the end of the year where the water sewer bill comes in towards the beginning of July next year, so that's why I broke it up that way. Phase three is when we would try to get into all four floors. So I just kind of worked through, and we do have a plan right now, and it covers really two groups of staffing. One is the Vermont Marble Company folks who would be working with the processing of hemp. You can see those in the top half of the table. In the beginning, until we have the CO, all we really have are workers. So we can't really do anything other than have workers in there until December, and the owners come and go as they please. But you'll see in the lower half, we have a caterer who's interested in taking in some space. They're gonna be doing catering. They won't be serving in the building, but they'll be catering and sending food out, and serving it outside, and also doing edibles that would have CBD oils in them as well. So that's part of their plan. So we would hope to get them in in January, and that would go through the rest of this billable year. And you can see how we've built up the people. We will have people in January working on third and fourth floor, so you see those four. You see six of our employees. We see, you know, a couple folks who would come in on a regular basis for conference rooms and meetings. We estimated what kind of process water we'd need. We actually don't need a lot of water. Most of what you do is dry. You're actually trying to keep everything dry. And even when you clean equipment, you're usually cleaning it with alcohol or some other solvent, just to get the sticky residue off. So we don't actually use a whole lot of water here. And then the caterer is a small group. It's really a two-person operation, and when they do work outside, if they bring in staff, it's always on those sites. So it's really just the two people who do the food prep in the building. They do around 20 meals a day on average, which really is, they have two or three catering jobs per week. So we've averaged those out and estimated some water. And you can see Stan provided the guidance documents that are behind this, that show for each of these types of people in the building, how many gallons of water per day would you expect them to use? So with Stan's guidance, I just kind of built these up, did the multiplications, and figured out how many you use that is by the Procter definition of 450 per day. So you can see how it progresses. So what I'm looking for is, in this year, I'd like to see if we could get it brought down. We're, on average, we're gonna only use about 1.1, even when we do get into the building and occupy it. And then with the current plan, next year, even with the upper four floors, we think we'd be at about two if we round that up. So that's what I'm here to ask for today, is really can we get one for this year and two for next year, or do we have to ask again and kind of refresh the request next year?
Any comments, questions?
I would think raising it up to the two afterwards would be something to revisit at that time and not now.
Yeah.
Just depending on what the status is of your business. Like, say, all of a sudden you flourish and you have.
I would love that.
And this is new to us, too.
Yeah.
New industry.
I mean, I'd be fine with setting it for this year, and then if you tell me when I should come back to get ready for next year, I'd be happy to do that.
We set the rates in June.
June, so maybe in May I come in and talk about the situation?
So they can adopt the document.
Okay.
It says 10 on it now.
Okay.
I think that's, you know, you've helped to make us, you know, more familiar with, you know, what your plans are down the road, and I'm sure they, hopefully they'll change and go up.
Get bigger.
Yes, yes.
I agree. I would love to come back and tell you they're going faster. That would be great.
Yes.
Well, I think there's a lot to be said, but Keith, you're coming in good faith. You're giving us the information that we need.
Yeah.
We certainly appreciate it.
We really appreciate it.
Yes.
Can I ask one question? So are you saying that they will be paying, that this company will be paying essentially what a residential home will be paying? Is that what one homeowner user means?
That's my understanding.
Is the same as the marble building?
The question, and what I've included with your packets are the water and sewer rates.
Right.
We adopted last year for this year, which shows that I'm in at 10. And the other sheets show the revenue requirements that we budgeted when we set the rates. So if you're looking at going from 10 units down to two units, or one unit, which essentially is what he's, 1.1, or call it two, you talk off eight units, it's about $1,000 water and sewer together, times eight would be $8,000 decrease in revenue out of $700,000 total revenue estimated.
Yeah.
So it's not a significant number. It's a number, it's a practice that, without interjecting here, is that we need to look at all the commercial buildings in town next year. I know the Marble Museum is talking about the same thing, as far as the number of units that they're actually using. The one thing that I did ask Keith was for a build-out, maybe what's it gonna look like five years from now? So you'll see whether you're gonna be increasing your revenue at that point rather than increasing it now.
Yeah. And we're not sure it would go much beyond this in five years. As we use the space, it's more of a space business than it is a people business right now. So I don't know that it would go much beyond the 20. I mean, I'd be delighted if it did, but we'd probably run out of space. And just coincidentally, we were even looking for space in town for storage, for example. So it's possible even with 20 people, we could run out of space really big. Many of you may have heard when Tom was describing the harvest the other day, those big totes. We have to bring those big totes in the building to process. So we run out of space really fast when we start bringing those in. So it's more about the storage space and using the facility than it is how many people you can squeeze in there, because the machines actually process quite a bit, and you don't really need a whole lot of people to do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'd be, I mean, and the only other business I saw that was even close was the geology building with Omea, just as a comparison. I saw the others were a little higher. And I don't know if it helps. I mean, I'd be willing to say do two this year and two next year, and I'll see you next year sometime. I mean, that puts a little back end, but could offer that.
I would hold the two next year until June and come back and ask for it again.
But I didn't know what was more important, this year or next year.
This year, the only thing you're talking about this year is the abatement of eight units.
Yeah.
For basically seven months.
Next year we'll start over again.
Right, for seven months, primarily from like November.
No, it would be the total bill from July to...
Right, but it's all, the one is only in place till next June, so basically it's seven months.
Yeah, it's issue revenue.
Right.
Yeah.
And then you start next June, July 1, with a new number.
Right.
Whether it's two, or whether they fill the whole building with water-using facilities.
We'll have budgeted for it.
Yeah, but that's the big thing. We'll be budgeting for that.
Yeah. Everybody comfortable then with making this adjustment? I think it's warranted that they're gonna start like this, and they've been forthcoming with this, and maybe at some time, when you get rolling, it might be good for us to come over and...
Absolutely.
...walk through it so we're more familiar with it.
And if something changes, if we do end up bringing in a process that uses much more water, I'd be happy to come back, because that means things are going well.
Yeah.
So I'd be happy to come back.
Yes. Well, we'd like to encourage that.
Yeah.
See everything work out, so.
Absolutely.
Need a motion?
Need a motion to abate from 10 units to two units, and I'll give a dollar number so that that can be put in the motion.
Okay.
So moved. So moved.
I get it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, thank you very much, Keith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great support you guys have had.
Well, everything works.
It's a mutually beneficial relationship.
It is, exactly.
Works the plan. Okay, so.
So just for clarification, you didn't say motion, you didn't say water and sewer, but that's...
Was water and sewer, abatement of water and sewer.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
The motion didn't say that.
Okay, good stuff.
Great homecoming. Fantastic homecoming.
Yes.
Perfect weather.
Yeah.
Good to see our streetlight project working, working well and near the...
It's coming along nicely.
Yes. And got all the paving done, other than that one little strip coming in.
That's done, they did that this afternoon.
Oh, great. Haven't been down. Great, so.
He related, is he, to Wolk or something?
I don't know.
He seems to have control over what's going on.
Yes, so, anything else?
I guess I would put in that the parking rec committee and the renovations down at the Rink building, I would recommend sometime when they're down there to take a look at it.
I was gonna mention that.
Especially, you know, Brian, Megan, and Greg have put in a lot of hours on their own just to get it done. But also, it's other programs. They had a movie night there last week, and they're looking at doing a Halloween party.
Halloween dance, yeah, or another movie.
If you get a chance to get in, they've got a large open space now that they can use, and things look good, and they're working very hard at it, so.
Yeah, impressive. Okay, move into the highway department. Dan, if you would.
Yeah. You've got the report in there, and the major items were, of course, dump day. We had two people out there for six hours each, so we had 12 hours of labor that went into that, and overtime, so. We haven't got the numbers on it yet, but that's there.
Went a lot better this year?
Yes. This time around? Yes, we only filled, what, one dumpster of junk, one big dumpster.
So approximately how many people do you think? Because I looked at the numbers from the solid waste district on hazardous, and it was really low.
It was?
Yeah, it was really low, like, our town's one of the lowest, come, for twice a year. When was the last one that they re... Spring. Okay, so this one wasn't recorded yet, then?
They were busier than we were.
Yeah. They were really busy down there with that stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought they did really well. I thought they had that truck pretty well filled.
There was people going to them and leaving, not coming to us.
Yes, so I think...
I'm just curious, because I think the number was maybe 24 for the two for spring and...
Oh, they had the fall one in the...
Oh, so fall was included? Yes.
No, no.
In what they...
Not last, not...
It might have been last fall, but I think it was this fall. But it might have been last fall. I'll have to ask them to clarify.
Yes, it would be interesting, because...
24 ton?
No, like, people.
There was more than 24 people in the spring.
So they must, it must be off. So I'll ask them to clarify.
They aren't keeping track here.
Yeah, I'd like to see those...
Not well, apparently.
Those sheets and...
Okay. They have to sign in.
Yes.
They ask them to, yeah.
Right. But I'm wondering if they break out hazardous waste from like TVs? Yes, they do. Okay, so that's, a lot of these were...
Okay.
So it wasn't as much hazardous waste as it was big screen TVs?
Yes.
So it was E-cycle?
Yeah.
E-cycles, a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, I see, okay. Not the total usage of the, of everything.
Right, it's just the hazard waste part wasn't very big, so.
That still seems like a surprise, even just judging from...
Yeah, because we saw paint and stuff coming in during the spring.
There had to be at least 30 people that came in.
Spring was better.
Okay.
Spring was a higher...
Maybe the people's basements have been cleaned out of, you know, the paint and that type of thing, but I thought they were, go along, I thought they were quite busy.
Yes. All... Yeah, because there was two people there.
Yeah.
I'll ask them to clarify, just because they're looking for, do we need to come to every town twice a year? And is it possible to just have one in some towns that are smaller numbers? So I'll ask them to clarify before we talk about any of that.
Yeah.
Okay, Ormsby and Olympus, they've gravelled and topsoiled and seeded along the edge of the pavement, so there's not a drop-off on the side. Beaver Pond, they do a regular check on the dam to be sure it's clear, and they did have to do some work out this year to get the leaves and pine needles out of it.
Yeah.
If you'll notice, there is a blind person sign on Mechanics, yeah, Market Street. And he does have the signs for the crosswalk at Field Street. He just hasn't put them up yet, but they replaced the signs up at the elementary school, the one that says 4:30 to 7:30 to 3:30, because it was not reflectorized, and you couldn't see it. If the sun was shining in your eyes, you wouldn't be able to pick it up. So they've still got some more there. We've still got some trees down. They did the pump station side hill for weed whacking. Boing is about ready to quit on that. John installed the emergency lights in the 550, which, doing it here rather than sending it out, that's kind of a mixed blessing, because he can do the work, and it's less expensive, because, but he's not out in the field doing what he should be doing out there, too, so it's a two-way street on it. So he's trying to match it as to what his workload is, whether he can do the stuff himself or whether he has to put it out. Anything that deals with brakes or safety-type stuff, we'd go out with, because he's not certified on all of these. Fall festival, I admit they were involved in that. And again, filling up the edge of pavement on Williamson Pleasant Street, which has been done. And we finally no longer have a sanitary sewer connected to the storm drain.
Good.
That one is done. We have Mr. Pease at the state who is very happy with us now, because he can close that file.
Yes.
Proctor is complete.
Yes.
Air conditioner, that's just dump day. I guess I got that one in there twice. That's good.
It's covered.
They're constructing a new leaf box. I got light box, but it's a leaf box for the picking up leaves. They got the vacuum unit that does it. Catch basins, anytime it looks like it's gonna rain, they're out there raking the leaves out of the grates. Signs on Market Street, we got that one. Main Street lighting project, they haven't been active in that, other than helping out Brad if he needs something. Water service line on Holden, they found a leak right at the corporation stop, repaired it, and they were out there today cleaning it back up and putting a piece of marble sidewalk back. Still not happy with the marble sidewalk, but nobody's been happy with them since they were put in in 2011, so.
Yeah, see, they've still got a, got the hole blocked off in the sidewalk.
We've installed a curb stop on Pleasant Street.
Just backing up to Holden Avenue, was that Tommy's house?
Yeah.
Tom Parker's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And rebuilding the ditch on the south side of Olympus, and putting dams back in there again, and trying to slow the flow of water coming down through. Tending is potholes, leaves, catch basins, and I got that in there twice, must be, I was in a hurry. FEMA storm damage jumps coming in tomorrow, and we're hopefully finishing up the paperwork on that. The risk assessment response is due on October 15, so hopefully we will get that one out of the way. And we still got some more firewood to cut and split and stack. And I put down 10 hours for dump day, actually it was 12.
I have a question. Were we contracting somebody to take the tree down in the park? Was that going to be done this year?
It hasn't gone out to bid yet. John picked on me last week. He told me I was supposed to get it out to bid, so that you could open them tonight. And I said, well, I didn't get them out in time, so he's picking on me to get them done.
Okay.
Because he wants, he wants the wood.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be good to get it done, too.
Ah, want to speak on the transportation alternatives, sir?
This is a grant program, application to do November 22. This is kind of a summary of what it is, the types of projects. They recommend that if you are looking at a project, you go through a scoping phase first, it'll take a year, and then go from there. If we were to try another project that is part of the bike sidewalk pedestrian, we've already got the scoping done, and so we could go into a design-construction similar to what we did with the Beaver Pond shared-use path, which is underway. This does have a matching grant, matching amount to it, but these are the types of projects, and I put it in here so that you could see if there's something around town. We've got some time to get it in. This is not a complicated application, but some of them are. My intent was to print out who got the grants last year and what they got them for. So I will pick those off and email it out to people so you can look at it. At the next meeting, if there's any interest in it, we can, we can apply. Usually a planning grant is about $30,000 to $50,000, scoping study, and if we had a new project, that's where we would go into. If you're design-construct, then you're in the $300,000, $400,000 category, which would take a bond vote at some time by the town to do it. I mean, the shared-use path, we'll have a bond vote probably a year from now as to funding the local share. So if you see anything in there that interests you, or if you see something around town that looks like it, on highway, pedestrians, these are small-type projects, but, and they, when they first started this program, they used to fund railway stations rebuilding. They don't do that anymore. If you'll notice, I think they note in here that they don't, they don't do railway stations anymore. And I would suggest we put back the railway station in the park, but...
That would be nice.
Yeah. And I think you mentioned the storm damage with FEMA already.
That's just an ongoing situation.
Yes. Anything else for highway that anybody... Motion to go into board of water commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
You've had their report. The big thing was the exercising valve program, which was a good opportunity, and they may, if they offer it again next year, we'll take them up on it next year. They did about 70 units this time.
They pay the man-hours?
What's that?
They pay the man-hours?
Yes.
The state pays the whole thing? Well, they don't pay for our time...
No.
...of being with them, but that's part of Simon's overall contract, so it's not an extra, not an extra cost.
Okay, so state people are exercising the valves?
Yeah.
Okay.
They had a contractor do them. Our guys, our guys didn't turn them, their guys turned them.
Yeah.
Willow Street won't meet flow. Is it tuberculation?
They, that's what Chris has got in his report. I don't think it is. We still haven't...
What is that word?
Tuberculation, that's a buildup inside the pipe of crust that blocks it.
Oh.
Kind of like a rust buildup, but it's not, it's not necessarily rust. It could be from something that's in the water.
Okay.
It reacts with the steel pipe, and it tuberculates, so that you end up with a hole maybe an inch out of a six-inch pipe.
Like the old galvanized...
Yeah.
Yeah. House pipes, yeah.
I was gonna ask the same thing. I'd never heard that before.
Yeah. What can we do? I mean, they should have some pressure down there.
Yeah, it's been the same, and we, you know, we, as I say, we dug it up last year, we TV'd it, and couldn't find a problem.
Okay, that's the one.
Somewhere that's, it's the same, it's the same problem.
Okay.
And we haven't got back to trying to arrive at a solution for it.
Okay. And the hydrant on Patch Street that's bagged?
That just doesn't have a flow, and they don't know why it doesn't have a flow.
I thought the valve was broken or something.
I didn't hear that, but that could be somebody's...
Yeah, I mean...
But that's supposed to be on the top of their list to get repaired.
Okay.
Right after we get through fixing water, water leak. We had another water leak today on Curry Street. And it was, it's on a trailer, and the water was spewing up underneath his floor. What we did is we put in a curb stop so we could shut it off. There was no curb stop on the line. So we put a curb stop in, so it shuts off, so at least now we've got, get his plumber to go in and work on it. And when we do that, I mean, we're doing the digging, but Simon is doing all the labor work. Doesn't involve our highway guys. It involves John operating the backhoe, and the alternative is to hire someone else, Tommy or Rick Reed. And John was out working on Holden this morning, so he just went over there and dug that one at the same time.
Fine. But Patch Street's on the list, right?
Patch Street is on the list.
Yeah.
He's got it number one on his, or number two on it. He should be number one.
We do have some hydrants in stock.
Excuse me?
We do have hydrants in stock.
Yeah, well, it's not the, I don't think it's the hydrant that's the problem. Well, I don't know. It could be the guts. We have a hydrant, we have also repair parts for a hydrant, so we can pull the guts out of it and put a new one in. So we can pull the guts out of it and put a new one in.
Anything else on that list of activities that? I guess no questions, okay. We did the water charge abatement. Contract six.
Uh, it's at the state, waiting for approval. The two things that are holding it up is one is getting through their paperwork processing on the DBE. Getting past the so-called 10-day wait period. And the easements, and again, I've got them all in hand. They're all marked up. We need to get the, need contact with the people and get them signed, so. And then, once those go in, so we should get notification to proceed.
Delinquent accounts?
This is a new form that Celia made up and it is a takeoff from what comes out of her accounts receivable. And I know it's long and I didn't see it until Saturday morning. And so she couldn't send it to me so I could edit it. So this is the same thing. It shows everybody who has an agreement and whether they're current. There's only one person that's current and that person was supposed to come in today and hopefully it comes in tomorrow.
Could, could you sit down with Celia and come up with one form, please?
Well, that's why the intent is for her to, her to build the form.
I get a headache.
And what, what she's gonna, what she's gonna do is sort by agreement, so the first thing you see will be the agreement. And then draw the line at a thousand dollars.
As long as we have one form, okay.
That's what I'm trying to get, yeah.
Well, Stan, this has been going on for a year now.
Yep.
Okay, a year. And you're just upstairs from her, you know?
I, I need to talk about some of these payment agreements. $2,882 and they're paying $50 a month?
Mm-hmm.
Celia mentioned.
That one was set by the select board.
Yes, that one, that one needs to be changed.
It's North Street, yeah.
Celia says that, that's getting deeper instead of shallower, so.
I can imagine.
We need to change that.
Is that the one that came in here?
Yes.
And said she was going to get some money from somebody else to pay it, so we made a nominal number.
Right.
Yeah.
And she never paid after?
She pays on it, but she never got the big check.
And then, I mean, $1,200, $50 a month?
Yeah.
I mean, that's not going to get paid.
No, we need to, we overstepped a little bit there. We should have referred her back to Celia. Celia was a little upset with.
We shut off, we shut off two people last week. One of them came in and did an agreement. The other one is still shut off.
Really? We need also, if they're going to stay shut off, we need to track this and turn it over to health officer. I mean, if they're going to stay off a day or two, fine, but if they're off after that, that's.
The town health officer being, is it, is it a health hazard not to have water?
What do you, what, where are we going? Where are we?
I mean, this is not the water department. Yes, I can tell them, but does he have any, I don't know what, what his authority is.
I think we should cover our butts here.
If it is a tenant in a building, the tenant will call their caseworker, who will then call the board of health, who will then send us a letter or a memo saying turn them back on again. Without paying.
Uh, then I would, you know, then I would get, turn it over to our attorney.
But right now, there's one house that's shut off.
It's a very long process with the health department.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, extremely long and difficult.
You know, that's, that's, that's a health issue and not necessarily a water department issue. If someone told us to turn it on, we'd have to turn it on.
But if they have no water, then they have no flushing systems, so sewers and that's when it becomes a real health problem.
Yeah.
And while we're on delinquent stuff, when is our next round of tax sales since these kind of roll right back into?
Mary sent out notices to people last week.
Perfect.
She has started the estate for Burgess in Probate Court. Will end up paying for that, but we will bill it back to anybody that buys it. There has been one individual who has contacted Probate Court about buying the property. But he wasn't ready to pay to set it up, I don't think. But the town is paying to set the estate up.
Is it their neighbor that's?
Yes.
Yeah, I figured, okay.
So it's a matter of getting through the process, then warning them and then going through. I think she's got four others that she was going to add on to the list. Well, we got Ben Rogers for water and sewer. We already own another one which has water and sewer on it. The one that Ben Rogers owns or is noted in here is owned by, is his, there is a tenant in it now. And the tenant is paying the current charges.
Oh, okay.
So this would be one that we would add on to a tax sale in order to get our vast account. Celia doesn't feel she can shut the water off if somebody is paying the current, a tenant is paying the current.
Do you know what the past due is?
Uh, not off the top of my head.
For that one?
Yeah, that would be the second one for Ben Rogers. On West Street, yeah.
Oh, the West Street one, okay.
But revenue is coming in, accounts receivable is going down. Next week, we had four on the list, five on the list. Four of them came in and either paid in full or signed an agreement. We have one that's on the list to be shut off this week.
When do we have to stop?
November 1st. So we will have the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th, 20th. We got three weeks this week plus two more.
What street's the shut off on?
Excuse me?
What street is the shut off on this week?
This week was on Green Square. There was a shut off on Pleasant Street. That one, the one person came in and signed an agreement. The other one is on Green Square. And that hasn't, nobody has shown up yet.
We're pretty sure it's off.
It's off.
Yeah.
I know we got funny water lines up there. 196. Casella Group, what's that?
Which one is that?
196.
Oh, you're, you didn't hear numbered, okay.
Well, the pages aren't numbered.
No, the items, the lines are numbered.
Yeah, so that's what he's saying, it's 196.
196.
One more time.
Chris Eller? Yes.
Is that the lab building?
That's the lab building.
Okay.
They haven't paid either the property taxes or the water and sewer charges.
Okay.
Since, since the closing. So it was the last payment last year that is in the delinquent list.
Are they in there anymore? I never see them.
There were three people there last week.
Oh, they did?
Doing something and they left the lights on.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a plumber there one day too, I think last week?
Well, they, they had their water leak in there, if you remember, behind the wall and all they did, we shut the water off at the big main valve. So they've got to fix, they've got to fix the leak before they can turn the water back on.
No, I didn't hear that.
Well, I don't think that building's on the top of their list.
No.
As far as activity is concerned.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's, they will be getting a reminder from Mary that they owe their property taxes. That's in the current, current list that went out.
And 224. That's the $50 a month. What can we do to change this?
224?
Uh, 22, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, 224.
North Street. Was part of that plan that we approved that if the big check came in, was put down on it, then that she could continue to pay 50 a month?
Yeah, we need to go back and do re.
Right, so she never paid that part, so basically our agreement is?
Is gone.
Null and void.
Boy, yeah.
Yeah.
You're good, Judy.
And I mean, that's not the only one. If you go to 243. $50 every other month.
Yeah, I saw that too.
43. Okay, so before we jump ahead, what, can we send her a letter? What are we going to do?
We'll send her a letter saying that she has not kept up with their agreement. The agreement references outside money.
Okay. And Ben, yours was 2?
243. They owe 960 and it's $50 every other month.
Okay, so that.
There's another one.
And they didn't come, I don't know who made that deal with them, or maybe they made it, but.
It's 19 Oak Street.
Yeah. 9960 total in arrears.
Yeah.
There's another one.
Be an issue.
But it's not as big.
Oh, bimonthly. It's $100 a month.
Yeah.
$50 bimonthly.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So it's $100 a month, so yes.
$100 a month.
Why did you write it up that way? That's the way they pay, probably.
They asked to do it. They wanted to come in every two weeks.
I thought I meant.
I was thinking the same thing. It was.
That's what I was thinking too, Mike.
I guess that would be semi-monthly.
The, if we don't have anything deeper here, um, could we go back to the first page? Four, seven, and 10 are Pittsburgh properties. I suggest we write those off, forget about them. I don't think we can do a lot.
Okay, Pajasic is in court right now.
Okay.
And I think I explained to you before.
Over $325?
The finance, no, the finance company is taking him to court. Because he's not paying. They're ready to foreclose. As a subset to add to that, they wrote us a letter because we are listed as a lien holder.
Oh, yeah.
And they said that we are secondary. And so we're taking the attack approach that we are primary. Alan George had a, a status conference on Monday. And he is writing up a suggested findings that would make the town of Proctor a primary. Now, you know, don't get scared about the legal costs because he charged us for the first, first part of it, but he's not charging us for writing all these documents.
$300 isn't worth.
It's not worth spending your time, yeah.
You know, what about these other two?
The other two?
I think we should write them off and forget about it. It's just. We're going to go to court with them too over?
Yeah.
I think we got enough.
Couple hours balance time and.
Yes.
We've already lost money.
Exactly, yeah.
How about, um, the one that's, because I, I didn't read it as, until I looked at the total, um, 32 up on Kane Street?
That's the one we shut off. He's been shut off.
That's the one that shut off?
That one is shut off.
That house is up for tax sale?
It's up, no, yes, it's up for tax sale.
It needs to be.
Yeah.
Remember originally when we had this done, it was like the top 10?
Yes.
And that owed the most? Is there any way to do that? Because I mean, a lot of these.
But he didn't get it till Saturday.
We shouldn't have to, oh, I know. But I'm just saying.
I don't, I don't have the spreadsheet and Celia and I talked about it today about sorting it. One is that we would sort by agreement and then the second would be to sort by number, by cost. And if you'll notice, you've got to put a couple more columns in here to make that work.
Yes.
I see.
Because the column for cost gives you water sewer total, water sewer total.
Right.
The one I was using that made you have three reports was I was putting another column in just total. I was sorting it by that way.
Right. Because I'd rather see just like the ones who owe the most upfront, because the other ones that owe like $100 aren't on the radar really right now, so.
Apparently she sorts by street.
Yep.
No, she's doing it by the.
Account number.
Account number.
Which must be by street because.
Because it's alphabetical.
Center Street, Charles Street, Chatham Park.
It's alphabetical.
Yeah.
But yes, once I sit down with her, we will use her form. I will make suggestions on how to sort it so that we can come up with it if I could. I asked her today to email it to me and then I would tinker with it and then get it back to her, but let her keep the list. Because she's the one who is dealing the day-to-day stuff. The shut offs, that, that was, we had one which is, was a list of shut off dates. And then everybody else. The other one was the agreements. And then the, the third one was by just dollar value.
Right, because if, if she sorted by dollar value, like say the top 15, that's the ones that we would be focusing on.
That's all we want to see.
Exactly.
So they're the high ones and then she can just have a column, do those people have an agreement?
I, I would expect that.
Save us a lot of paper.
By the November meeting, we would have agreements with everybody that was on our shut off list this year. Our shut off list this year was the top 15.
Yeah.
But I think the other important thing we need is the status of, are they up to date?
Yes.
I mean, I want to see that.
Yeah.
Well, that's what she's got.
Agreement's no good if it's there.
Exactly.
In the wind. I make a motion, we stop chasing the second and the third customers in Pittsburgh there, seven and 10. And since the lawyer is handling the number four, we let that go for now.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's Farnsworth and Greeno.
Right.
Yes, but you mentioned that to Celia. If Celia has an issue with this for some reason.
No, it's just on the books.
No, 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 but I mean, we didn't think she had an issue with the $50 thing either, but she did.
Yeah.
But if she, if she has an issue with anything, please let us know. We can.
I mean, this is just a matter of, as you say, writing them off. I think probably the auditors have written it off already. When they do our finances.
Days ago.
Because they're five years old now.
Yeah. Not worth chasing them.
No.
Okay.
I heard an inquiry about the total amounts. Is there a particular reason why there isn't a, a dollar amount that people aren't required to enter into an agreement? It seems like there's a significant number that are very large balances and when they sign agreements at $100 a month, some of these on here don't even have agreements. So what just, what are they doing? Just hoping they make it through the November deadline until April?
I, yeah, we can only shut off so many at any one time.
No, my question is, why can't the board set a dollar amount if you're X amount delinquent that you must enter into a contract? It seems like that we're allowing people just to dig a bigger hole for themselves. There are people in here that have no agreements, no significant amount of money. So November is going to come around and there will be no shut offs until April. So they will have missed payments and then they're going to come in and pay you $100 a month. It, it's a little bit, I think, a slap in the face for people to come and pay their bills on a regular basis. I guess it, it's a little naughty when people look at this list and particularly people that have owe three figures and don't even have an agreement in place.
Well, the agreement issue is the protocol, which is defined by statute, says you need to send them a letter, give them 30 days to catch up, or it's going to be shut off within a four-day span after they receive, 30 days after they receive the letter. The logic, the, the logistics of it is that we looked at doing five shut offs a week for three months. September, October, two months, September and October. You can't do any more than that. So we took the top dollar ones and those are the ones that got it. The ones that were down below the $1,000 range or in that area didn't get a pink slip. Because we physically can't do it and why send them a pink slip if we're not going to be able to live up to our end of it, of shutting them off? Now, yes, it did, the pink slips brought a lot of people in.
Yeah.
Also, so did painting for DigSafe bring some people in. And shutting them off brought some people in.
Well, I think part of the problem is that this went way too long and nobody ever did anything about it years ago, so it's just added up and added up.
Can I clarify something? Because, for example, Melissa Morris, number 17, owes $13. And is on this list. Are these all people, is every dollar amount that's on here past due or is it just they haven't paid their current bill?
This delinquent bill as of June 30, 2019. They may not have paid their current bill. They may have paid their current bill. If they come in to pay the current bill.
It's applied.
$13 will disappear and it'll show up in this year's unless they pay the 13 extra.
Right.
And now, of course, we are charging interest, so people who have missed their water payment date for this fall. And now, of course, we are charging interest, so people who have missed their, uh, water payment date for this fall will be, have charged interest on it.
So I have a question. On line three fifty-four. I'm just wondering what the story is here. Is this something that's in trust?
Three, three, five, four.
I believe we own.
Is that the one we own?
I believe so. The one on West Street, sixty west.
You say two sixty-four?
Three fifty-four.
Oh, three, three, five, four. That's the one right before the house.
Three, five, four. That's the one that, uh, we were the low bidder, high bidder on.
Okay.
So when it comes up, January of next year, we will be the proud owner of that building.
I think that's a greenhouse, isn't it, across from...
It's brown, isn't it?
Brown, okay.
I don't think it's like green. It's where, um, was it, did Luccacina live there or one of those?
Oh, I'm thinking of the wrong one. Okay, yep.
Yeah.
A ramp got hit.
Yeah.
So I think my, one thing I'm struck, my problem is, is trying to keep track of next steps to be on these people is that, like Tom said, this report, I feel like it's different every meeting. That we're looking at something different instead of identical.
Yeah.
You know? So I think if it just be streamlined, and even if it's not run by, I don't know, does she use Cronos or something for this?
What's that?
Cronos? Do you use that, your software package, like to run this, or does, stuff you do while you're recording?
She downloads it off and never...
Oh, never, okay.
Water account, water sewer accounts received.
And I know, bless you, it might be hard to not do it, to do it manually, but it might be more what we're looking for, like create an Excel spreadsheet with these columns, and then just the top, you know, fifteen people on it. And when they come off the list, cause they paid, they're gone off the list, a new one comes on.
Exactly.
And that way, we're just looking at, like, those by, four or five columns consistently every, so, you know...
That's a matter of Celia and I working together to set up a sort so that you get what you want.
Okay.
And in a perfect world, when their last payment was.
Right.
And the other one is Tom's, is to draw a line at, at a thousand dollars and not bother to report to the board.
Yeah, we don't wanna hail them. We don't need to.
But that way, we can see, like, okay, we met last month, this guy's here, has no agreement, still hasn't paid.
Right.
You know, I think it's just a quicker process.
Or has an agreement but didn't pay last month.
I can't keep track of what's, you know, who's paying, who isn't paying.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, there's a column on their current, that's who's paying.
Yeah.
And she's got how much they're paying.
I'd still like to know when the last payment was.
Current?
We will work on it.
There isn't a current.
Up to date.
I was giving you three reports that reported three different things. Yeah. Now she's trying to do it all on one...
Right.
Report. But, uh, she didn't do the sort, which meant you got twelve pages.
Yeah.
And we'll sort it down to three pages.
Okay, uh, a motion to go into the board?
You've got another item on your agenda.
Oh.
Chittenden Watershed.
Yes, excuse me. Chittenden Watershed.
I had a gentleman stop in, he called me last week, wanted an appointment. He came in today. He would like to buy the Chittenden Watershed.
What does that, what's that comprised of?
Uh, it's sixteen hundred acres of timberland. Up in Chittenden, upstream from Furnace Brook. Uh, it has a easement across it for the Green Mountain Club. There is a first right of refusal by the Green Mountain Club, cause the long trail goes through a portion of this parcel. It's not the total parcel that Green Mountain Club is involved in. There's just so many feet either side of the, the trail, I think, that they are looking at. Uh, this gentleman owns a piece of property which abuts, in Chittenden, which abuts ours. Uh, and he's ready to come in and pay cash and buy it. What I told him is that I, I believe that, uh, there's two steps involved in this. The first one is establishing a price, and whether you put it up for auction to see whether you get the best price for it. Because there are other people who have expressed an interest in the past, and may express, somebody who may express one in the future. Uh, the second step would be, uh, you have to go before the voters before you can sell any town property. So a town meeting, as I explained to him, town meeting next year would be the earliest that someone can, uh, get a vote on it. Uh, what I told him I would do tonight to see if the select board is interested in, uh, following up on this. The discussion we had back in two thousand fourteen, when we came off from the, uh, water system and had the well put in, was to keep the property and get the logging revenue. The, there was not an analysis made. There was an estimate. We asked our forester an estimate of what he thought the next ten years would bring in for revenue. I haven't got that on top of my head or in my hand right now. Um, it's hard to do, but he's basing on growth and, and his forest management plan. The other aspect of that was if you had X dollars in cash, and you put it into an investment, what would be the return on that, and would it be less or more than logging? So that's, that's the financial decision would be whether you'd be, earn more money from this on logging, or whether you would earn more money from interest on an investment.
I don't even think it's worth talking about until we know what the numbers are.
Value is, yeah.
We did have an appraisal done on it, and I don't have that one in the top of my head, but it was close to a thousand dollars an acre, which means you're talking about a million and six.
So, and you, the only impact of selling it would be that we'd lose the sale of timber?
Yeah, you'd lose the sale of timber, but you'd gain the...
Right.
Investment money.
Right, okay.
Or you, or you'd blow it all on Cadillacs for the select board.
So just so, I, I just dealt with this today, cause we have timber land and we sell it. And it's really, the tariffs have hugely impacted the price of timber now. So it's really dropped. It's not worth anywhere near the value it was a year ago, two years ago.
Depends on what you're logging.
So...
It depends on what you're counting. We're currently logging, so it depends on what you're logging.
Right.
And your property in current use? Is that property in current use?
Yes.
So you'd have to pay money back. So that's a financial implication as well.
But if you're trying to cut timber, I'm just saying, big-scale timber cuts and exporting it, that's where you're hurt. So I don't know what we do with ours. I don't know.
Uh, our, the timber harvest goes into the water fund.
Okay, right, but I'm saying, I don't know where your stock, yeah, yeah.
We, we just got our final payment on the last timber sale, was five payments at forty-nine thousand or something like that. Uh, times five, so fifty, uh, thousand, times five would be two hundred and fifty thousand is what we took in revenue in the last three years on this one sale. Uh, Andy Hutchinson, our forester, is in the process of marking next year's sale, because there's another hundred and twenty-five acres that, under our plan, is ready for harvesting. This is the one that he, I talked to you before, that he feels you need to have a decent road up into it to get a decent price.
The one point five million basically is something we wouldn't earn over, what, twelve years? If it was consistent with what you've been getting.
Once, once we get through, we're doing five hundred acres at a hundred and twenty-five, plus or minus, a year. Once you get through that, we may not harvest again for twenty years.
Right.
So, you know, what, what is the plan called for? We, and we just rewrote the plan. What does it call for as far as harvesting, estimating how much revenue you're gonna get off of it in a ten-year period? And, uh, versus what you would get for interest on an investment? The question that I told him I would call back is whether the select board is even interested in talking about selling that piece of property.
I'm not interested, but if, if it does come about that we do sell it, we need to throw in the headworks, you know, the old Coronation Building, and make them take that and be responsible for it, and that'll get it off us.
Take, take, take the whole thing, okay?
That would be a little plus.
I really need something from a, from a, the forester, some input.
Somewhere I have a report that we did back in two thousand fourteen. I also have an appraisal done in two thousand fourteen. I didn't bother to take the time to dig all those out. They're somewhere in my file system, so I'm not gonna quote numbers on them. But if you're interested, then he would be willing to follow up on it. He's also, he also has looked at the mall in Rutland. He's also looked at some other things. As far as investments.
Wow.
And he says he'll pay cash. Which doesn't make a difference to you, as long as you got the check for the whole amount. He can finance all of it he wants, but...
Houses for sale in Proctor, we're gonna move them into town there.
We, we did.
We are taxing them.
We did review some of the properties that were in, in Proctor. I pulled up the map on the screen, showed him how to get to it. Zeroed in on one particular property, which, uh, is in the industrial zone. That may be, uh, something that might be for sale. Gave him a name of, of someone who contacted on that. Also gave him a name, Joel Blumenthal's name for Omia as a potential contact, if he's looking for acreage, because they've got, again, large acreage out on Florence Road.
Yes.
So I don't know what he's looking for. He grew up in Pittsburgh, up here, the Hathaway Farm. He's living in Florida right now, but... So do I tell him that, yeah, we'd be interested in talking some more?
I don't think it would hurt to just talk and learn more.
No, certainly not.
And do some, again, some basic research. I'll pull out the value stuff, pull out what, uh, Andy had given us. So that you can make a, you know, a money decision. I don't know if, I don't think anybody on this board has a sentimental, a bit, reason for saving that piece of property, but...
No.
No. Well, it's paying for a buck, whichever way it is. Yeah, it's worth... Not closing the door on it completely till we, uh, spend some time.
Yes, we need a lot more information.
And you need a financial advisor to look at the numbers when you get done.
Yeah.
But anyway, it was an interesting conversation. He was a very engaging individual.
Great, good, nice.
I invited him to come tonight, and he says, I don't like talking in public.
Smart man.
And I didn't tell him the TV camera was gonna be here either.
Smart man.
Great, well. Okay, uh... Anything else for water? Um, okay, with motion to go into board of sewer commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
You have Simon's list. Most of it is routine-type stuff that had been going on. Repairing, getting ready for winter.
Uh, down at B three. Last sentence, we've been waiting several months for the, some sliplining, I believe.
Well, they showed up...
Yes.
Last Tuesday. I got a telephone call from Dan saying, Green Mountain is here. They don't know what they're supposed to do.
They didn't give you a, a week's notice or anything?
Didn't give us any notice at all. We contacted, uh, Aldridge and Elliott, who probably got back and said, it's in the stuff we sent you, but they, but it was in the report. So they did get down so that they had the list of what they needed to do. Inspecting manholes, cleaning sewer lines, and TVing sewer lines.
So they are working.
They are working.
Excellent.
But, uh, it, it, Dan called me up and said, they just showed up and said, they don't know what they're supposed to do. So which is, I don't know which is worse, not having them here, but, yeah, they get to get them to work.
How about B four? Is there anything we need to do about that?
Warner Avenue?
Um, B four, it's about, uh, a larger pump.
We've got, uh, I've got quotes for a seven-and-a-half horsepower and eleven horsepower. The difference is about, uh, three thousand dollars between the two quotes. Uh, one is, one quote is to rebuild the existing with a seven-and-a-half horsepower motor. The other is rebuilding it and put an eleven on it. The recommendation I got from Simon is to, they would like to see the bigger one, because it puts less stress on, on the system.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at the budget now, and of course, this time of year, it's, it's still early in the season, but the money is there for pump station repair to do the set. We just did some work over on Park Street, a park pump station, which we had to put in a new variable speed drive, and the motor's over there. So that just chewed up a little bit of money. In fact, that, that bill came in today from Patch Electric for four thousand something. So I think we probably, you know, the difference between a three thousand to put in the eleven and it works better, I think we go ahead and do it.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Yeah, that station must get a lot of use.
Mm-hmm.
That pump.
Yeah.
We did the sewer charge abatements. We covered delinquents, so... Return to the regular select board, uh, via motion to...
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, review?
Well, Lisa's not here.
Right.
Maybe, well, we're still under sewer, and we got, uh, sewer, uh...
Yeah.
No.
Yep.
That's under, that's under the utilities, yeah, so maybe you wanna take that up.
Yeah, so...
So give us the short version here.
The short version is, uh, Green Mountain Power is assessed at about, uh, eight-point-something million. And I think she's got the numbers in here. Okay, utilities, nine-point-nine, so it's close to a million, which is eight-point-six percent of our grand list. What she is saying is that Green Mountain or Central Mountain Public Service, when they bought the hydro plant from, uh, the power division, they paid eleven million for it. Since then, they have put, rebuilt the whole station. Uh, the question is, just from pain logic, if they were willing to pay eleven million for it a while ago, how come we're just in for the nine million now? So what she's saying is essentially is to hire Sansucci at sixteen thousand and change to do a complete appraisal, not only of the Green Mountain Power facilities, but also of Velco. Uh, there's a rationale for doing both of these, because you can't spot appraise. So if you can take a category, so the category is utilities. And so, and, uh, so this is where she is doing it. She feels that there would be enough increase in value that would be more than pay Sansucci's fee...
Yes.
Very few years, if not in one year. Uh, what we get, and what part of the appraisal is based on, is the, Green Mountain Power has to give us every year a report of what they feel the value is of all their various facilities. And this is state requirement. Every town who has got an electric line going through gets a report of what they, what Green Mountain feels the value is. We are not assessing it, what their, their value is less than what we've got it assessed for.
Of course it is.
And if you, and they have never come in and, they came to the Board of Civil, they came to the Lister's grievance here two years ago. Uh, however, they didn't go to the state, they didn't go any further after they got turned down. So as Celia, as Lisa says, maybe they can't defend what they got in there. But Sansucci is, he's doing a project for the town of West Rutland on the substation. And is coming up with significantly higher figures than what the, uh, Green Mountain Power has reported the value to it. And the question is whether you use, uh, initial cost depreciation, whether you use a sale price, or whether you use what the value is in producing electricity or impressing electricity. So she thinks it would be a good investment. The second option in there is, their second contract is for sixty-eight hundred dollars a year to update this review, this appraisal every year. Uh, I think her attitude is, let's hold off thinking about that. Uh, I think her attitude is, let's hold off thinking about that, let's see where the first one goes before we go any further.
Yes, I read that too, yeah.
So the, before you are two contracts, one is for the appraisal of the utilities, and she's broken out the ones that are there, and the second one is a service contract, which would, we would prefer, propose deferring for a future date.
This won't take up a lot of your time.
No.
Okay, good. I'd like to make a motion.
This will all be, this will all be the Lister's. The, the price tag on this would be paid for out of the reappraisal fund. So it won't come out of current budget. It'll come out of the reappraisal fund, which has money in it now. It is, we get nine thousand a year, plus or minus, from the state to go into the reappraisal fund, with the idea that every ten years you should do it, every eight years you should do it, and you'll have enough money to do it. So, the cash is in the bank to pay the fee.
Okay. Well, I think far as I'm concerned, it's a no-brainer. Make a motion, we move forward with the, this year's contract and the service contract for the future we hold on.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both of them. Thank you, and that motion passes. Great. Okay, good. Thank you for that.
You didn't want me to read all of this, do you?
No, thank you.
I assume you read the contract and you agree with all the words in there.
Enough of it.
Yeah.
Read the numbers.
Yes. That's what tells the story.
Yeah. Okay. Review bills and sign orders. And.
I think it's everybody.
There's been a question brought up about the payment for right construction.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, we hold paying the right construction bill here till such time as they start working.
Completion?
Completion.
Completion.
Which is, which is the thirty-first, which.
Which isn't far off.
No. They could be completed in two weeks, so.
Yes.
I second that motion. I don't think that we should pay them, I think they've taken a long time to do this wall. I'm pretty disappointed in the lack of urgency that they have regarding our town wall.
Yeah, there's been some questions, but, yeah, this definitely needs some attention, so.
And they, one invoice has been paid already, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So they, we, it isn't that we aren't paying at all.
The first invoice covered Deesco's costs.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Okay, all those in favor withholding this check to right construction?
Aye.
Aye.
Right?
Would you mind emailing them, Stan?
That's it.
Would you mind emailing them tomorrow and telling them the board decided?
For Lisa's purposes, on the total value, their invoice was.
Almost forty-nine thousand dollars.
You want?
Thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Well, you've got it in front of you.
Yes.
That's why I couldn't find it.
I know he's got that good of a memory.
And I would suggest we also make our architect aware of this in an email tomorrow.
I will, I will, since our communications by contractor through the architect, I will provide the architect with the information from the select board meeting and let him provide it to the contractor.
Sure. Fine.
Yeah. Well, and see what the, I'd, I'd be curious to see what the holdup was for not being there today.
Yeah, because he told you. Could have been color mistake, right?
Yeah, it could be. Being a contractor from Massachusetts and they're probably union, and, so they.
We have missed a ton of good weather.
It's not just today.
Oh, no, no, but this kind of brought it to a head.
You know, I'm willing to bet twenty dollars, you know, that they won't be here tomorrow. Any takers?
I'm with you, I don't think that they'll be here tomorrow either. I don't think there's a sense of urgency at all.
Hundred. I put my hundred down and then I called Joe. Send a couple guys over here, Joe.
Just somebody.
Yeah. Now, we want to see that truck from Massachusetts there. I think everybody's signed everything else, uh, okay. We covered the utilities appraisal.
Yep.
Marble bridge pieces.
Okay, a few years ago, I came to the select board and the marble, the remains of the mar, the old marble bridge are down at the wastewater treatment plant, laid out on the ground. We needed, we're looking at space for, uh, the salt shed, but also turning around and using it. We also have a big pile of dirt down there that needs to be leveled out. I invited Lisa, Mary Fergosi, uh, the museum to view it to see if there was any interest in the pieces that are there. At that time, nobody took any of them. Uh, my threat was at the time was, we're just gonna bulldoze the dirt over the top of it. We haven't done that yet. There are, is at least one individual who asked if he could look at what was down there and could, he has, he took some small pieces of marble. But he would like to take some bigger pieces. And I don't feel comfortable in saying, "Go down and take whatever you want," without getting a public out there, "Does anybody want any of these pieces for anything?" Publicize it, put it on Facebook, put it on the website, that if anybody, a Proctor resident wishes a piece of the old marble bridge, or wants a piece of marble, uh, please give me a call, we could honor to take a look at it and go from there. But before, I gave it all to one person. And this person doesn't want it all, but there's some larger pieces down there that he thought maybe we could help him haul, and I said, "No, we're not gonna help you haul." But I didn't want to give it away unless the board felt that we should give it away and that we should publicize it.
So it's just like random pieces, like shapes, sizes?
There, there's still some of the pedestals from the bridge rail that are down there. There's other pieces of marble.
I want one of those.
I, I really haven't.
They were selling it for a while, so.
Right. Sell it.
Sell it.
Until the frost kills everything down there, you probably won't see very much, and a lot of brush is growing up through it.
Yeah.
But to make usable space, if we cover it, it will be archived as to where it is. If anybody wanted to do an excavation sometime in the future, they could come back and do it.
I mean, I think if people want it.
Yeah, let them go get it and then get rid of it.
Yeah, if somebody from town wants a piece.
A resident, yes.
Yeah, I just limited to residents. I get the word out that if there are people who would like to it, and if there are enough people, we'd set up a showing on a Saturday afternoon or a Saturday morning and let people come down and look and see what they want, and make sure everybody's aware that it's there.
Is that gonna be on a first-come, first-served basis, or is it gonna be a bidding war?
First, first one to remove it.
Yeah, whoever's got a truck and a strong back.
Yes, that's gonna take one.
If the board concurs with that, then I would follow through on it.
Okay. I think it's a good idea.
It's consensus to do that, yes. Health and Safety Committee?
I put that stuff on your table at the last meeting, is there any interest by this board in, in doing anything along this line? If so, I would follow more through on it.
What did you say, you put stuff on? Yeah, it was like.
Was it last meeting?
It was last meeting.
Last meeting we talked about, right, okay. Two weeks ago, it wasn't. I'd be interested.
So there is board interest, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Town Office, I think.
Should help with our insurance.
Covered the front wall with the exception of, we talked about it a couple of meetings ago, landscaping. There was a comment made, let's put the grass back, drop the plants. Is there a desire by the select board, any, any direction?
Let's keep it simple, you know, next summer, if somebody, some resident thinks we should do something more, then we'll consider it then, but.
But just topsoil it, seed it.
The point now, we're just starting grass is gonna be a challenge.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, like on the bank, like last, like before, there were so many plants and flowers that just were dying, but I think if you filled it with just like hostas on that first piece, that that would be nice because they're low, they're low maintenance, and they're just, you could var, you know, have variegated ones, different color, and it would just be greenery, and nobody'd have to mow it.
Well, in the past, I think our yard has provided expertise for doing things. I just get the direction from the select board as to, as you say, keep it simple. Simplest thing is grass, more simple is the single planting of something, and not try to. Put a variety in.
Let's wait till spring.
Yeah, definitely.
What we'll do is mulch it down for the winter.
Maybe we can plant some hemp or something.
Yeah.
It used to be plentiful, huh?
Smell that stuff, boy. No?
Can't smell it.
Anything new on the renovation contract and what have you?
The section one oh six, uh, they came back with some questions. State Historic Preservation, one was windows, the types of windows, they want to tie it down as to what it's gonna be.
Yeah, the plaid boards and, they're all keeping the snow off that little roof, and they were concerned it was gonna build up and damage.
Anyway, we responded to their requests, and we should receive it. The next item is the environmental review. Regional Planning is gonna do a Phase One site assessment for pollutants. That may be enough to not have to go any further. They're doing it as part of their Brownfield Grant with their contractor that they've got. So, that would be one more check off, and that's the last check that we need to provide. The application, I finished it up and shipped it off with everything we had. So it's just the environmental review. And then it's in, in their, their possession to rule whether we're gonna get a grant or not.
All right, and roughly timeframe?
Roughly timeframe is sometime in the middle of November, we should hear back from them. Assuming we get the environmental review in. Uh, the schedule we have proposed is bidding in November and December, award, contractor selection in December, and be ready to go. How much of it can be done with winter construction, how much is spring construction? See, and I have talked about the relocation place. I mean, we were looking at the marble building here a month ago. We must stay, I told them, Keith, that we were still interested in doing something up there, preferably on the lower floor, so that you could use the access coming in off of Market Street, off of Main Street, and not have to go around to the Pine Street and then walk around to the front door. So, they're, they're thinking about that. The only other option, of course, is the museum, and we talked with them a year ago about rental space. So, that's, that's the only second one. Now, whether Casella's got space, but that would put us right in the middle of the construction zone as far as the day-to-day activities. And I don't think the fire department will give us the fire department for six months.
When we're putting this out to bid, is there going to be a deadline on it?
Excuse me?
When we put this out to bid, will there be a deadline?
Will there be a deadline, a completion date, yes?
Oh, yes.
There's a deadline in every contract.
Sure.
There will probably be liquidated damage, there may be liquidated damages. And that is something that needs to be discussed. Small contracts, that just adds up to the price of putting it on, and, and what you get for liquidated damages for not completing. We don't have that in the current wall contract. We got a completion date, but we don't have liquidated damages.
Perfect.
So, I would hope that by July of next year, we might be in a.
Great.
Building.
We all hope so, yes.
Yes, and.
Because I mean, all in all, it's not a huge project.
No, see, if, if we'd have not gone after the accessibility grant, if the day after the bond vote passed, thirty days after the bond vote passed, we awarded a contract.
Yeah, we'd be there.
Or negotiated a contract, we'd be in construction now.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's the potential of getting a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Because otherwise, it's gonna be a bond issue for the whole thing, so.
Right, no, it's, we're, I think we're proceeding the right way.
And I thought maybe I'd ask Judy to follow up on workplace.
Follow up on what?
Workplace workshop.
Housing workshop.
Housing.
Yeah, fair housing.
I feel like I've been at Sony Workshop plate making. It was, it was good, um, I mean, it was kind of, it didn't dive into a lot of, you know, detail and stuff, but it was, um.
This is aimed toward housing projects more than it is for renovations, but you still gotta check it off.
Right, exactly, yeah. I mean, it was beneficial and, you know.
Maybe we'll have a housing project sometime.
Right, exactly. Sorry to have much more to add to it, but.
Uh, junk and junk vehicles.
Okay. Twenty-six fifty-one West Street, one of the pickups is gone. The trash is being moved further back into the lot, it looks a little more attractive. And I would propose that we cross it off the list for the time being to see where it goes from there. The one truck that's still there is up in the woods. Thirty-seven East Street, a ticket has been issued for that one, because that's been sitting there for a while. An inquiry is gone for forty-eight East Street from a report back from the Sheriff's Department. I haven't received a report from them yet, and the same with Center Street.
And the junk is gone from Newton Street?
On the corner?
Oh, it has?
Yeah, I checked today. So that stuff's all gone.
Good. But there's still a grill if you would go pick it up down on Larry's Lane.
Yes.
I asked a neighbor down there if she knew who it was, and she said, "I think I do, but I don't know for sure." I'm gonna contact another neighbor that I know, lives right there on the corner, and see if he knows whose it is. To me, this, this is a peer pressure issue. As a fort, but I did put the, the two ordinances that might be addressed it as far as how long you can leave free stuff on, on the, on the street. But then again, if it's, how do we enforce it?
Yeah.
If you don't know who put the grill out there, well, somebody knows who put it out there. Do we pick it up and send them a bill? We're gonna have the road crew be involved in that?
Hate to do that.
It's just one more thing.
Then I'm gonna start putting my stuff out free then.
Right. Well, I can understand if, I can understand if it's on a corner and nobody's claiming that, I can understand that. But I'm talking about other things, like the TV set that's been sitting out on West Street for months with free sign, really, it's been rained on, it's, it's no good.
Couch out there for a while.
There is, there was a couch out there for a while.
I mean, if someone has like a yard sale, and then they don't get rid of everything that night, they put it out free, then I would say, you know, like a twenty-four hours later, get it out, because chances are the weather is gonna.
Even a couple days, but when it goes weeks and months, it.
Seasons.
Seasons, I'm like waiting for the stove on it.
I guess the question is, if the two ordinances are in there, which one do you want to put it in? And what, what do you want to give for a limit? And then I'll give it to the town authority to write something in.
Grounds maintenance, probably.
I think grounds maintenance is what I was thinking.
Yeah, it really isn't public.
Grounds maintenance is very vague, there's not a lot in it.
It is.
But the public nuisance, I don't know, it's a, it isn't really a nuisance, but it's.
Not really.
Right.
I mean, he could, whoever it was could have picked that TV up and brought it right down to the dump and put it in the e-cycles and not been charged a single dime. It's. It's.
But, yeah, to me, it's, it should be peer pressure on the street. I mean, if you know who it is, you can make a telephone call and say, you're gonna get rid of it.
Right, right.
I mean, I think it goes into Section Four. And the ground should be clean, safe, and sanitary, free from waste, rubbish, debris, standing water, or uncontrolled growth.
All you would do is put a time limit in there.
So, you know, items left on the curb for free pickup shall be removed within forty-eight hours of.
Right.
Yeah, when they were left out.
Perfect. But we need thirty days for that?
No, yes, oh, you're six sixty days, because this is an ordinance. What I get is Alan to write up the phrasey, I just said forty-eight hours.
Yeah, and so then we gotta pass it next meeting.
Or any stuff left on the street.
Curbside?
Free stuff, yeah.
Free stuff.
Items left for pickup, or whatever.
Free pickup, whatever you wanna.
Excluding Christmas trees.
Okay, we'll be dealt there.
Yeah, we pick those up for free.
And that's a nice touch, people mention that.
Yes.
Let me get back to junk vehicles again. I did get a comment from the deputy that you're spot zoning. You're picking out vehicles, there are more vehicles in Proctor that fall into this category than what come up at the select board meetings, or what neighbors complain about, which are the ones that you act on. What's the, I mean.
I think, and it's true, because I find when I go walk or drive someplace I haven't been for a while, I'm like, oh, look at that car up there, you know, and, but it's not common for me to go, so I don't notice it. So, I think it's more the ones that are just visible that we see, because we're en route, and notice them. I mean, unless we canvass the whole town and just make a note. Here's a car, here's a car.
But I mean, that's like saying that you're spot zoning when you pull somebody over for speeding, because you happen to be there when they drive by, I mean, it's what we're either being pointed out, or what we're noticing.
Well, you're a big fan of saying, you know, nobody complains, so I'm not doing anything.
Well, that, I'm not a junk vehicle policeman. The select board is not necessarily.
You say that about a lot of things, you know, it's a good, it's a good policy.
But.
I don't think we're zoning intentionally, you know what I mean?
I use the wrong word, zoning.
No, but I get what you mean, though, I feel like.
I don't know who these people are.
A lot of them I don't, I gather I know what he's talking about to some degree. And so, probably should be handled.
I've got one person who has commented about some vehicles across the street from her.
Right.
And I say, you're gonna make a complaint, so the select board to follow up on?
Yeah.
She's gonna let John take care of it, where the snow flies.
I'd rather Sheriff give us the list if he, you know, feels that strongly.
If he could, if he wants to spend the day driving around town and listing, I'll.
Well, I mean, they do.
I'll put that in the reply, the select board feels, if you wish to work with the violations, feel free, we will consider them.
I think that's great, let's put it right back.
But I think it's, it's the town's duty, it's not, I don't think it's our police officer's duty to make note of everyone. I think it's more if someone's being bothered by somebody's car sitting there for months, then file a complaint, and then we deal with it as a select board, you know?
I'm just saying the sheriff, I don't want the sheriff to stop, you know, finding him or talking to him.
Let's see, the policy we've been using for the last few years is we get something from them that says it's not registered, it's not insured, and then we go from there. Because unless you go out or I go out, and we rub off the license plate.
Right, and it's kinda hard to say something.
I did that on the one at School Street, and it was two thousand five.
Right.
Well, and it's kind of a heads up that, you know, now they're under the spotlight.
I just wanted to go back to that fair housing thing, because I don't know, I just was thinking of this. When you went to it, I don't know how it was handled, but they kinda gave an overview of fair housing, and how it originated, and where it came from, and it was odd, because I was there representing Proctor. But the slides that they put up were of Rutland's marketing campaign, and basically slammed it.
Slammed it?
Yeah, so it was kind of like, you know, look at these, this marketing plan that was put up, and do you envision this as fair housing, really? I mean, do you see any diversity in their campaign, and their pictures, and their, and everything's green and beautiful and stuff? You know, and so, it was, it kinda caught me, I was like, okay, um, you know, those are the people who wanted to be in it, and there was diversity in some, but not the two she showed. So, it was kind of an odd approach to their lack of fair housing. How do you draw people in here to be in your community if you don't represent everybody in your marketing campaign?
They didn't know you were involved with the city of.
I don't think so, she did after, I mean, she knew, so, but, yeah. It was kind of interesting, so I just wanted to add that out there.
But again, this is one of the check off, if we were doing a housing project, you'd have to.
Say that, yeah.
Grant, you'd have to do something more toward.
Okay, I'm done.
Town manager search. I think maybe it's about time that we maybe got together and kind of laid out some stuff, and maybe, I know I'm talking about, you know, a special meeting, but I think that's probably the way to do it, and I think we could do that at the office and.
Yeah, because I think if we just keep putting it on the agenda and address it, then it's not gonna go anywhere.
We've gotta find a starting, and kind of get that, and then maybe have a couple of members go from there, but I think we've all gotta get down and kind of get on the same page for the thing, so. Is there a, is a Monday night better on a?
Monday nights are usually fine.
Next Monday?
Yeah, why don't we kind of just brainstorm if you could make, put out a.
Notice for next Monday?
Yes.
Time?
Time, what, six o'clock?
Fine on me.
Fine.
At the town office?
Yes.
And then I'll put the caveat behind it, if anybody needs accessibility, please call me.
Anybody know what date that is?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Fourteen, seven is twenty-one.
Stairs will be done by then.
I'm betting that.
Okay, let's at least. Traffic ordinance.
That's in the same spot, I just leave it there as a reminder that there's something that has to be done.
We just gotta re-pass it at this point, isn't it?
I thought there was a couple of other things to do with it.
Something you wanna change, and so.
And we gotta draft it, the big thing that is not in there is the no parking on streets. Pull down the information from the state's statute stuff.
And the locations for the signs, wasn't that the other big thing that the sheriff wanted?
Well, he wanted, he needed the distances from the intersection to the speed signs. The question that I think I raised at one meeting is no parking on the travel portion of the highway. What type of a hindrance is that gonna make for people? Is it, is it a problem? And, I mean, I know the street we're talking about, but there's a lot of other streets where people park with two wheels on the grass and two wheels on the pavement, and they're not eleven feet off the center line. I will draft it together with the eleven-foot and townwide, so that's on every street. And not spot-specific areas.
Because it's not that one spot, because there's a person who parks on Park Street in the travel lane. A couple of times, when the sun's in your eyes, you don't even notice until you get there. So, I think we need to put that in the ordinance.
Be every street.
Run that by me again, every street, we can't park in the street?
That's what you're telling me, on the travel portion of the street.
That wasn't exactly the conversation, though.
I thought it was, yeah, because I mean if.
Because we talked about the exception of ballgames on Park Street, and events at the high school, and so, the conversation was a little different than how it's being portrayed.
Yeah, because, I mean, Christmas dinner, I don't want everybody to get a ticket at my house.
Right, I think that's where we stopped.
Every basketball game, this is parking, standing, or stopping.
Because we did, we talked about that, too, we talked about when there's games at the school.
We talked about UPS.
I don't know, we've got some real.
We gotta figure something out, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we gave up last meeting, because, you know, we couldn't find a.
Common ground.
Well, I think one of the criteria when you go to planning commission, and you're putting in a permit or building a single-family home, or having a home occupancy, one of the questions used to be, do you have parking? And homes are to have parking for two vehicles, that was the standard. So, I think the problem arises when people choose not to use their property to park their vehicles, and park in the street, particularly some streets which are narrower than others. So, that's part of the issue. But there have to be some exceptions when you live in a community this size, and you have schools that are listed within residential areas. You have churches that have events that people are going to park. Union Church is a perfect example. So, I think there has to be some common sense to it, but when people consistently park in the street and other people on that street cannot receive oil delivery, UPS, FedEx refuses to deliver to you because there's a vehicle parked in the street on the travel portion of the road, those are issues. And it's interesting that that issue is not taken, I feel like more concern is given to junk vehicles than when I brought that issue to the attention of Stan and to the deputy. So, I think there has to be a little bit of conversation around that.
I'm more about the people, like, that we know that do park, you know, in the street on intersections or in other areas and stuff, rather than like the Christmas party where, you know, you have ten people and they all park in the road. We don't wanna become the, you know, the armies, that you can't park there anymore, I mean, it's a small town, and those are the things you do, but, you know.
It's a safety issue to me.
Right, but like on those occasions, I think we don't, you don't police things, you know? And I think, honestly, I don't think a lot of people know it's illegal to park on a sidewalk.
I don't think how they don't know.
Yeah, it's easy, I mean, I think a lot of people think, I'm off the road, it's safer, I'm off the road, not realizing, you know, like.
But a handicapped person can't go down on the curb and then work their way around.
Right, well, I'm talking like through Proctor, if somebody pulls up on my street and parks on the sidewalk, you know? It's like they're not gonna think, oh, you know, we can't do this, I don't know, I just think a lot of people wouldn't have any idea.
I think it's gonna take some discussion to find something that's gonna work without being.
Yeah, I'd hate to go street by street.
That makes a long ordinance.
Well, yeah, and, you know, some of the streets I'm not familiar with, and I don't know what would be the best parking solution for them, and.
Yeah, you almost need to take a map and.
I mean, if you were down around Eaton Avenue, and you got a ditch on one side of the grass on the other side, and you only got.
There's a ditch on both sides.
Asphalt. But it's a dead-end road, and everybody knows each other, and they all put up with each other.
We do.
Yeah, and you get the upper end of Charles Street, and, you know, there's not that many houses there, so, you know.
So, Stan, can we move the ordinance on the agenda to Highway Department? And that way, we'll get it in the beginning of the meeting next time, and we'll.
And we'll pull a thought in with. You know, on my street, I know when the kid gets their license and they get a car, because it's in the street.
Right.
Well, and even on North, well, I guess it would be Pleasant Street at that point, now it's North Street. Even on North Street, they park on the sidewalk there, you have to walk, when you walk, you have to walk around the car, and I don't think it's really company that's there.
North Street up by the intersection?
Yeah, it's before the Pleasant Street, North Street, kind of.
Okay, like North Street by the school, or?
No, down where the Y is, North Street, Pleasant Street, in that area. I think it's, it's gonna take a little while to figure that out, and other towns must have this similar.
Problem, yeah.
Yes. Challenge, we'll call it a challenge.
Polypositive. Yeah, that's a good idea to move it up into the highway, and maybe it won't get lost in the bottom of, bottom of the pile there. Okay. Why don't we get to the Sheriff's Department thing, let me go out of order here a little bit. Any questions on that?
It looks like they're doing what we've asked, which is a little more driving around.
So, how, do they contact you, Stan, and let you know some sort of schedule?
I got, two weeks ago, I got a two-week schedule that showed two o'clock in the afternoon till two o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night, and when you added it up, it was eighty hours a week, so it was West Rutland and Proctor overlap. This is the time the sheriff was gonna have someone in West Rutland or Proctor. I emailed back and asked for it to be a Proctor-specific as to what hours we might expect to see someone in there, and then we would review the time span and say, is this the type of hours that we really wanted? Do we want it from two P.M. to two A.M.? Do we want it from ten A.M. to ten P.M.? Do we want it from six in the morning until six at night?
Well, and I think that, too, being able to choose, you know, most of these are really small. And then, you know, every now and then, there's a big eight-hour day, but they're. To be able to have some say, is it eight hours of this day, or is it maybe six hours, that, you know?
But, so, two things that I just still can't wrap my head around, and I'm just gonna throw them out there. On, there's no page numbers on these.
I'll put page numbers on them next time, I didn't think about that.
On page one, two.
They're all in order of the ticket number.
So, yeah, ticket number three, or incident number three-five-six-oh-seven.
Which page, you're on, the third page?
The fourth, well, the second page backside of it. Serve restraining order at North Street. Unless that restraining order came about because of the town, why are we getting charged for that hour?
If that was a domestic violence-type case, and there was a judge ordered a restraining order, then that would have been part of our policing function.
So, if we didn't contract with the sheriff, would the restraining order never have been served?
How state police will probably issue it.
I'm with you, I have concerns over things that we get charged that.
The next one, three-five-five-oh-one, which is another page down, second incident on that page. They were out because of an out-of-control student, again. If we called nine-one-one, if we didn't have the sheriff, somebody would have come. So, those are the ones I have a hard time with, I don't have a hard time when they're patrolling through town, when there's nothing going on and they come here specifically to police our town. But when it's somebody called for the police, I have a hard time with us getting charged hours for that, because they, somebody would have had to have done it anyway, so why are we paying? So why are we paying this money?
The question is who would be doing it?
Right.
Who?
If you, if the sheriff, if you, if the sheriff is not responding to it, does you, does a citizen expect a response?
Yeah.
Uh, if they call this, if the sheriff's in town, it's a pretty immediate response. If they're in West Rutland, it's 20 minutes to get here, the show up time. Uh, if you were to call the state police for one of these incidences, how long would it take to get them to get here?
I just know for this particular incident, we had three cruisers show up and it was within five minutes of calling.
Okay.
I kinda have, especially since I called for a welfare check one day last week and we're not gonna be there until this afternoon and had to call the state police department and that person did need to be checked on. I, I really have a problem with, with that. Cause they're telling us when they're gonna come and when they're not gonna come.
They're telling us when, when they are in town.
I mean, we pay them.
Well, it could have been three cruisers that went to town.
But the other thing-
That's what I was told, at least.
My thought is like this one here that you referenced about the restraining order is that he was called in because the shift was over and our sheriff left, so he was called back to do this. That's what I'm guessing because the hours are already there prior to that.
Yeah.
And this is usually when they're off duty.
Yeah.
They call in for-
Yeah. And I know, we, we deal with them in Rutland sometime. You have, you know, we need something served and they're not there at your beck and call. That's when they get a chance to go and serve something and then they'll do it, so.
I just think it's kind of- Well, and there's two right here that we're, I believe that one incident-
This is our police department.
There's two sheriffs.
Right.
See this?
But what I'm saying is like if they put in a-
It's on the same day.
Shift and go home and something happens and they get called back.
At least two showed up.
Yeah.
Gonna charge us for it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, you take it off some other time that you're here.
Right.
I mean, if you add the numbers up here and it didn't print out very well at the bottom, it was a total of 142 hours.
Yeah, I, I'm not worried about the number of hours. I'm just saying it's hours that could have been spent patrolling town. No, that's, that's all I'm saying. We'll see what happens on Wednesday.
Now, the high school one, there were three cruisers that showed up.
There was at least two. I mean, if you look in the report, there's two.
At least two are on this report.
What day, what, when was that?
Uh, 35501 and 35490.
Well, you see agency assist once in a while too. That means our officer went to Rutland town.
Right, no, I got you. But no, this is, this is Park Street juvenile problem, one of them, and the other one was out of the high school.
At the same time, so you know it's the same.
I was there.
It's in, here, the welfare check, two officers for a welfare check.
So I have one question. When they were here last time, we, um, were impressed that they had stopped a semi truck prior to the meeting. Was that in here that they ticketed them?
I don't think they ticketed them. I don't think they ticketed them.
Yeah.
So when they go over the bridge and we tell them that they aren't to be over the bridge, which is why we have the aesthetically pleasing signs on the front lawn, we simply just escort them back? I thought the essence of it was for a fine. They, they have now broken the law that there are multiple signs there for. And they, the two of them stood here prior to the meeting and reported to you that a truck had gone over and they had stopped it and turned it around. What's the point if you're, if they're not ticketing them?
Good point.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that annoys me, that the signs are up and we're simply turning them around.
There was a la, lost truck, um, last week, end of last week in town. And stopped the gentleman and he had an address of 61, uh, 61 Main Street.
Yeah.
On his paperwork. And then Joel came out and he was this and that and the other. Joel, it says 61 Main Street on the guy's paperwork. Well, ever since we've had these computer problems. My, they, I, he moved all our stuff back like three years. So we're picking up the old address again. So we need to watch for lost trucks. And I called the sheriff, no sheriff was on duty. They gave me the state police, uh, I talked to a 911 dispatcher. I told them there was a lost truck, uh, truck in Proctor. And we did an officer. She said, just give him directions, you don't need an officer. I said, no, he's, you know, he drove past all the signs. Well, if he's lost, just give him directions. And she hung up on me, so.
She hung up on you?
Yeah.
Again, if, if his delivery address was 61 Main Street, he's legal.
Yeah.
Because he had a destination in Proctor to drop off some stuff.
Yeah.
But that wasn't the case at the last meeting when they stood here. And it's not even recorded in here that they turned them around. So how many like that actually happen? How many do they see and they just turn around without ticketing? They stood here and we praised them for turning it, the truck around. And they both spoke to it. Not a notice, not a ticket. That's inexcusable.
I just don't understand all these one and a half hours either. You came to town for one and a half hours, that's it? But there were three, let's see, what day is this? 10/7, 1, 2, 3 different sheriffs came to town on the 7th for a total of three, five hours. Three sheriffs, a total of five hours. What is the point of that? Because we're also paying them to drive all the way here to spend an hour to drive all the way to wherever. And that happens frequently.
Well, there's a half hour, half hour overlap where we had two sheriffs in town. Between 2:30, 2:00 and 2:30. Or 1:00, 1:30, sorry.
And Officer Cummings that was running all the radars, still running radar.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I, I don't see that changing.
And Officer Cummings was only in town for an hour and a half.
Mm-hmm.
We ran radar at two locations and then we did some paperwork.
Yep, and then here she is again, two and a half hours on the 3rd. I'm not sure what stat at LaFons is, but I'm pretty sure that's running radar. So again, it's the same. That's the same one we pointed out last time.
Well, we'll find out.
Right, I, I-
The issue, two issues. One, from my standpoint is I'm not a police officer, so I don't know how to, how to police a town.
Right.
Two is the schedule. It does bother me that I got a schedule, but it didn't-
Yes.
Detail.
But you didn't really get a schedule.
No, I, I-
You got a, between these hours, we might patrol-
Well, they will, they will be in Proctor and West Rutland between those hours.
Yeah.
How many are they gonna spend in Proctor and how many are they gonna spend in West Rutland? I was looking for an indication of when you might expect to see someone here. And then to the board, is that, is that the time period you really want someone here? Would you prefer to have someone here at 6:30 AM to 3:00 PM? Do you want someone here and do you want to alter it? I mean, that, that would, I mean, I, I think there should be, if you were doing speed control, it's 6:30 AM. If you're doing drunks, it's 2:00 in the morning.
Well, and I thought we had asked to have some kind of presence every now and then at the five corners and I don't see that that was ever happened, ever.
The words out of my mouth, I was just gonna bring that up.
I've, I've yet to see that occur.
Yeah. 3 o'clock at the five corners.
We've asked several times.
Yeah.
Page 2 there, uh, the gentleman spent way too much time detailing what he did here.
Yeah, yeah, almost a full page.
And, uh, the names, you know, we used to see a few names. Now we see-
Yeah.
A whole list of names, officers passing through here.
It, it, and they're different, every two weeks, there's a new name or two. I just, I still feel we need to continue to look at our options.
Yes.
Since we're going into budget.
You're going to Wednesday?
Yes.
Good. Maybe a special meeting Monday, you could give us a short-
If you put it on the agenda for special meeting Monday, then we can talk about it Monday.
I'll put it, I'll, the first item on the agenda and I'll stick around for it and then I could tell out of here when you-
You got it.
We can, uh, we could start a little earlier if it's, if it's all right with everybody.
Um, what time was it that we're doing it, 5:30?
We said 6.
I can do 5:30.
Let's do 5:30.
5:30 is finally-
Okay, let's change.
Is that a little better for you, Stan?
Doesn't make any difference to me.
Thought you had a hot date.
As long as I, stop and pick something up, no. My wife has become accustomed to my hours. She was accustomed to my hours before I came here, so.
Yeah.
She had a holiday for nine years when I was working at home.
Yeah.
Then she got rid of me.
Have we pretty well killed everything or?
Uh, I'll stay here.
Do we need this purchasing policy? I thought we needed to change the number.
Put it in there so that you'd have it, I didn't even look at it.
Okay. Did we need to change anything higher though? I thought we had discussed that to some extent.
Hey, I haven't even looked at it.
Okay.
All I did was print it out and put it in.
So we need to put that on there, cause I know FEMA likes to have that purchasing policy.
And, uh, yeah, if you could mention that, uh, maybe they could be in the area of Park Street sometime in the 5 to 6 neighborhood.
For noise for motorcycles.
Pretty soon, it'll be too cold.
Well, stop this one. Not necessarily. I didn't realize that, uh, talking with a gentleman from town, uh, this morning, uh, was in the town office. The jackets that they have plug into the motorcycle.
Ah.
They've got heat in their jacket.
And in their gloves.
Wow, that's awesome, this.
Not, but not in the helmet.
It's slippery.
Yeah, but that'll get plenty warm.
Do they put chains on it or for the ice?
That's very possible.
Is this for every viewing?
We, do we wanna, uh, try to deal with this for a few minutes?
Let's at least take a look.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Let me, let me go through what process that I would propose to follow in the one I've been for eight years.
Sure.
Cause the first thing is a colored sheet, which gives you the budget 85 actual, budget 18, actual 18 plus or minus, budget 19, actual 19 plus or minus. Last year's, this year's, current year's budget and then a proposed budget. Uh, the narrative is how I develop the numbers for the proposed budget. So if you look at the narrative for legislative and administrative, select board salaries, I added in the same because I would take direction from the board. If they all wanted to raise, then we would change the budget. So the narrative is in there as far as the chairman and each member. Uh, direct labor, that's my time, but Lisa's time for recording. Uh, I charge out 5% of, generally 5% of, budget 5% of my time for highway, 5% for water and 5% for sewer. Strictly because these are different tax type items. The water and sewer are rate based. If we gave them all my time, um, then the rates would go down. It's not a big number, but it's something I do put in. So I do charge time to them. Uh, in here, there is an administrative assistant at zero. I put it, an item in the budget here five years ago and it got approved, but they never approved hiring anybody. So I took it out. But it's, but it's there, you know, uh, something to think about when you're talking about a future manager.
Mm-hmm.
As far as whether that person is gonna want, need, or require an administrative assistant. Retirement, because you're looking at a new manager, a policy is three years before you qualify for the retirement program. Once you qualify, you get 5% of your, of your salary. So that was, is a saving. Uh, health and accident insurance. I currently, the town is reimbursing me for my Part B, my supplemental and my Part D. Uh, to the tune of, uh, 300 and something a month, about 4,000 something. If, and I got two scenarios in here. One is a family plan, which the budget would come up to, uh, 25,000 for health insurance and accident dismemberment. The second one is a two-person plan, which would be 18,000. Uh, this gets back into what you are going to talk to or put into your package for your two-town manager. Whether you're gonna provide a family plan, if you've got a family member, uh, whether you're gonna limit the coverage to something else. You won't know the answer until next June.
Right.
The question is what do you want a budget? And what I proposed is a budget that would show a family plan in there just in case you ended up-
Budget high.
If you don't end up with someone in the family, you'll show a surplus. But it will have an impact on your taxes. Uh, accident dismemberment, that the town pays 100% and it doesn't amount to very much at all. FICA, that's standard rate. Workers' comp, we'll get a policy on that. A lot of these estimates are based on last year's premium. We haven't got this year's premium yet. Once I get this year's premium, I'll go back through and modify all of these and put in, uh, what I would expect. I did put in for small increases for workers' comp and small increases for, uh, unemployment. I heard on the radio that workers' comp is going down, that we're doing a, a good job of safety, not necessarily Proctor, but statewide.
Oh.
Statewide, it's going down.
We don't count that one.
Uh, membership and training, that's just a budget number for, one is for dues, two is travel. If you'll notice that I put a thousand bucks in there for travel. Not necessarily all for me, but for the select board members too. If you go into workshops or seminars, so that's in there. Uh, you can compare with what I've had in the last past few years. Publications, I get a magazine, big deal.
$300 magazine?
Yeah, the other part of publications is we get a manual for a new select board person. Like we, we bought three of them last year.
I came with one.
Office supplies, that hasn't changed much over the years. Uh, computer and copier services. Uh, I put it zero in my budget, I put it zero in Celia's budget and we moved it all into the municipal building budget. Cause it's all common use. Every time that somebody shows up for a problem with a computer, it could be in the town office, it could be in my office. But, uh, to budget it all into that is a lump sum and not try to divide it up between departments.
Great.
Specialized software does get charged against the departments. Postage, that's anything we have to send out. And advertising is for ordinances or public meetings, just numbers. Public relations, that's where we stuck in here a few years ago. Promotional materials, if we were to do that, that's kinda got under the marketing program now. And, uh, recognition, employee recognition, rather than putting it under miscellaneous, I put it under an item here. Uh, tax abatement, if we ever abate any taxes, it has to be booked someplace and this is where it gets booked. Celia and I have talked about changing the whole structure of financing, uh, tax sales, penalties and put it all into a new department and get it out of here and put it into a separate one. So there may be a change. The money will probably be the same zero, cause we don't know what the answer is. Town manager search, that's in this year's budget, but it's not in next year's budget. So if you look at, if you add up the numbers I've got, uh, I end up with a 9% increase and if you know, probably the biggest chunk of that is insurance. The one the league has been talking about and I do have some information is on the Blue Rewards Health and Wellness Plan. And I don't know any of the details, but I've got some information. I don't know if Rutland is looking at something like that or not. But what our policy says is that the town will provide up to eighty percent of a Blue Cross Blue Shield Platinum Plan. And, uh, this is what they got highlighted here, that's what, with the percentage being set annually.
So, but the, the town manager could say, "No, I want the gold plan instead." Is that true?
What's that?
The town, if, whoever takes the job, could they say, "I don't want the platinum. Can I get the gold plan instead?"
Yes, they could.
So it would be less?
No, it'd be less for them.
It would be less for them, okay.
Wouldn't be less for you because-
We would still pay eighty percent of whatever the platinum-
Eighty percent of the platinum plan.
Yes.
We had one, one employee that did take a gold plan because it was just he and his daughter.
Right.
And he never got sick. So he did, he did not pay a contribution because the town, twenty percent of the platinum plan covered, more than covered a hundred percent of the gold plan. I don't know if you got any general questions without getting into details, but I expect you can look at the numbers as you go. Uh, I thought I was gonna have the town clerks in here, but, uh, Celia wasn't ready because she's looking at salaries. Uh, because of the next, end of next year, she may have a new assistant. Rhoda has indicated a desire to, uh, step down at some point in time. And if she does, she's not gonna pay the salary she paid today, so she's trying to come up with what a reasonable salary would be for, for that position. Uh, assessor's office essentially is the same as I've had before. There's a little increase for some of the items, but nothing spectacular. Uh, right now, if you look at the actual for last year, uh, the assessors, we underran substantially. I've talked with Lisa Wright about what it is and we left it in there, uh, without changing it. If we were looking for a few dollars, this is one I would go back and look at.
Just curious, do you know why she's not here tonight?
Uh, her son was in town and he was flying out at five o'clock tomorrow morning. The only indication she gave me, I thought she intended to be here, but if she felt like she needed to be a mother, uh, to drive him to Rutland, to Burlington to catch the airplane tomorrow morning. So I assume that's why she's not here. Elections, that's an easy one because this is a year where we will have an August primary and a November general election and a town meeting. So we will have three, three meetings next year as a minimum. And that's what Celia budgeted. We popped back before, between two thousand and, uh, four thousand. Last year, we overran because we had the special town meeting in June to vote on the building.
So is there a reason that it's under Quarry Valley and there's nothing under town on the, on this?
Oh, actually Quarry, Quarry Valley reimburses us.
Okay, gotcha.
Or, or writes the check directly. What, what we charge Quarry Valley for is the time for the justices to carry the ballots to the central county court.
Gotcha, okay.
And stay there to count them. Did you count them last year too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we charged them for that, for that time.
Okay.
But it goes directly to them. But I put it in here so that we know that there's a, an exposure.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And professional services is just, uh, carrying them over. The only new item in there is audit. And if we expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal dollars, we have to have a so-called single audit on that project. We may come close to that next year with Contract Six coming out and also for the additions to the building because that's federal money also. And any highway grant money would be in there. Uh, so that's, that's a number I've got in there. If I had a better handle on what I thought we were gonna spend, if we were gonna be less than seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal monies, then we don't need one. So that's, that's a safety valve for B under whether we're gonna run into one. So that's what I had for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, look at it. What I would propose is I'm gonna bring in the same type of packages, go through the same type of spiel and then we'll have that one special meeting where we look at the whole thing.
Mark everything out.
See, see what the front page says on the summary.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's the important.
Okay.
To you is the important B, it's to know-
I know.
When, when, when something happens and it's over budget, you cross it out.
Yeah.
And I would expect the, you know, once you get the final one, is that the B will plus here, minus there, plus here, minus there, uh, to get ready for town meeting.
And just look over that, uh, expenditures. Of course, I just got that tonight, so, uh, I don't-
I don't see any, any-
Are you worried about anything, Stan?
I didn't see any.
We bought our first, uh, four loads of salt. We're paying, uh, seventy-four fifty a ton. We budgeted eighty dollars a ton. So if the tonnage falls under, we will be a substantial change. Again, our highway budget, you can carry over your surplus into future years, which is what we have done for paving. If we underrun someplace and we have some cash at the end of the year, we either keep it in the bank or we use it for a special project. And we got a lot of special projects coming up.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, new paver this year, was John happy with?
Yes. Yeah. It seems like he had the right, he had enough equipment. He was speedy.
Yeah.
And he did everything we did and the, the price was, uh, sixty-four, sixty-seven dollars a ton, yeah. Which was significantly less than what Wilk had in their bin.
But he bought from Wilk.
What's that? He, he bought the mix from Wilk.
Yeah.
It's the cost of putting it down, yeah. Or, or some other, whatever the other reasons are.
Yeah, and this was just a informational thing in that-
Oh, that's that, uh, letter that addressed to you, Tapestry's program.
Yeah.
I did have a copy of it. I opened mine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did have a request or consideration for a new, uh, service organization and I sent them the standard letter that I send to anybody who asks that the first time you show up, you've gotta come in by petition with five percent of the voters. And they need it by the middle of January.
For town meeting?
Yeah. And it gets voted on as a separate item. Last year, we put the whole thing in again, whether you wanna put it in again or not, I mean, it all gets approved and it's, the cha, no change. I also, one person was interested in raising their request. Or I said, "If you raise it, you gotta come in by petition to, to raise it."
Yes.
So.
Anything else, any?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
You want to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, please.
I would like to adjourn. I'm with you. I would like to go.
Yes, meeting adjourned.